I, Amber Willhite, hereby declare.
I, Amber Willhite, hereby declare.
Under oath that I will faithfully perform.
Under oath that I will faithfully perform.
The duties of the board member of Cherokee Public Schools.
The duties of board member for Cherokee Public Schools.
District IO four six.
District IO four six.
To the best of my ability and that I will faithfully discharge.
To the best of my ability and I will faithfully discharge.
All of the duties pertaining to said office and obey the Constitution.
All of the said duties pertaining, oh well, say again. All of the duties.
All of the duties pertaining to said office.
Pertaining to said office.
And obey the Constitution.
And obey the Constitution.
And laws of the United States and Oklahoma.
And law, and the laws of the United States and of Oklahoma.
There you go. Congratulations.
Yay.
Congratulations.
And then she signs up.
Yeah. I'll get through that better next time.
Where was the original copy of the certificate that was sent?
It's right there attached to that.
Okay, so that's yours.
Alright, number three. Vote on reorganization of the board members.
I make nomination to keep Cory as Vice President.
I second that.
TJ's made a motion. Can I second Judy?
Willfil?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Keller?
Yes.
Willhite?
Yes.
Not for everybody. We didn't make any changes. Would no? Are you wanting to go through each one?
We have to.
Okay.
I don't guess.
I make a motion to T.J., Allison, and Vice President.
Second.
Willfil?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Keller?
Yes.
Willhite?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to have Amber as.
I'll second that.
Secretary, or Secretary at Trician.
Clerk.
Clerk. Hey, I had three choices.
Willfil?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Keller?
Yes.
Willhite?
Yes.
For some reason I was thinking last time we did that it was no change.
Just a one, one kind of thing.
Matt, it's.
Number four. Approval of the consent agenda. All the following items which concern reports and items of routine nature normally approved at board meetings will be approved by one vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all these items. The consent agenda consists of a discussion, consideration, and the approval of the following A through J. If anybody has any questions, comments. Everybody is getting their stuff in time just to review it.
There's copies of the fundraisers that have been submitted in there. Mrs. Gutch wanted me to just mention that there's several that she has submitted. And she's thinking towards the future because she might have several people that qualify to go to the state nationals. And that will require lots of funding.
Yeah, I think they only had, what, thousand dollars in that softball account? Did they even have that much?
Um, this would be the FCCLA.
Oh.
Oh, yeah. I was thinking the fundraiser.
Keith, stand up fundraiser for.
What's the knife and utensil? Is this on kitchen?
It's a rated cutlery. It's a real popular cost.
Okay.
Pretty good price.
Really, really nice knife.
And they're, yeah, and I think that was one of them.
Yeah.
What are they made?
In the United States.
There you go.
It's scary as.
USD.
Does anybody think of any question, anything?
I just have one. I, uh, I was looking through my, when it got sent to me. The, the high school elementary lights in gym, was that just to replace all the lights? In the, in the.
What's your, what's the amount there that you're looking at?
Twenty.
That was replace both. That was to place the, the high school and the elementary. And then he came back and we added a little bit additional to replace two more strips of light.
Okay, in the, in the.
In the gym, in the big gym.
The big, okay.
Yeah, and they are amazing.
They are.
They are bright.
So that was both gyms.
They are bright.
So what did they replace in the elementary gym?
The, the lights are now LED as opposed to regular lighting.
Just the bulbs in or the fixtures in?
Above.
Yeah, they had to put a balance.
You buy, you have to.
Yeah. Yeah.
One of the LED.
Did they replace all of them?
In your gym?
Fix the burnout ones.
I thought I just fixed my burnout one. I had to change a few of them out.
Well, what we discussed, what we discussed with, with not bond but just me related was changing out all of them. So I'm not sure if he's just not gotten to it or if that is the.
They used to be eight foot fixtures and they put four footers and they put a whole bunch more four footers when we did the remodel.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I don't know what the, um, if they just came back in and just did regular lighting on that. When I got here, we were a week, uh, the next week we signed off on the fire marshal, so.
Right.
Was that, but in that gym, did we just leave it as a regular light? Didn't, we didn't put the new lighting in the gym?
Uh-huh.
In the grade school gym, in the remodel?
Cause they painted and, they painted and put that.
Or did we just put up the same lights?
I'm gonna guess you didn't go LED because of cost.
No, no, I don't think we did LED, but I thought we did all the fixtures, so. I'm sure.
I'm sure the fixtures are not all the old one.
Oh, okay.
I, I'm sure the fixtures were probably new.
I know we put some clear paint in.
Right, right, we had sunlight now. The high school looks awesome.
Yeah, it does. It's really nice. I think the cost savings will catch up with us sometime, but.
And they instantly come on. They don't have to warm up.
They're really nice. Yeah.
Anything else?
That's all I had.
T.J.?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Just made the motion. TJ's second, Judy?
Willfil?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Keller?
Uh, abstain.
Willhite?
I'm gonna say yes, but abstain to any.
Okay.
Motion carries. Number five. Discussion of vote to approve or not approve the 2017 youth school calendar.
Do you have any questions on that? The Christmas fell really, um, really funny this year, so it was kind of, had to kind of be a split deal. The Christmas is on a Monday. So your choices are teach all the way up to Friday before Christmas and then have, then the week you come back, you either have a half week, so it's a week and a half out, or if you go whole week, we've already got our tournament started on Thursday and Friday. So what I just decided to do was do the Wednesday to Wednesday with this, um, the way that it fell. It brings us back on Wednesday and then we have, um.
Where are we at here?
A professional development on Wednesday and then we start our tournament on Thursday and Friday.
Keep them in school longer.
So Christmas break will be on the Wednesday?
Mm-hmm. It starts the twentieth, I believe.
Is that your only concern for next year? Just trying to figure that out?
Yeah.
And then we'll come back on the?
Uh, the fourth, I believe. The kids will come back on the fourth, the teachers on the third.
Right, okay.
Yeah. No, I did push the, um, August back a week, um.
Over our start date?
Mm-hmm.
I saw that.
Yeah, as opposed to coming back that first or second week. We are, we're gonna come back on the, within the next week, um.
So the first day of school is a seventeen?
Yeah. And then I kind of just adjusted with.
More help.
Yeah, I felt like more kids needed to be helping with some farming duties and, so we pushed it as far as we could and.
Gives us the same amount of snow days and everything?
Uh-huh. Well, pretty much. There's, um,
We use something.
There's not as much time on the next year's calendars there is on this year's calendar, just because we started that week earlier. But even at this, I think it came out to about eleven hundred hours and we have to go a thousand eighty.
Yeah, okay.
So there's still a little, there's like one day.
But we can take those Fridays that we're not going to school at the spring break, right?
Yeah. If need be, we can adjust those days. Or, you know, um, this year, they, the principals came back with their schedules where they were. We actually go longer in the day this year than we did last year, so there's all sorts of ways to do that. And so, um, this gets us out in May about the same time we're out this year. And, um.
Any other questions on the calendar?
Make a motion to approve.
TJ's made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Amber's second, Judy?
Willfil?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Keller?
Oh, yes.
Willhite?
Yes.
Number six, discussion and vote to approve or not to approve an updated bullying policy.
We have to upload, um, a policy for the State Department, uh, for accreditation purposes and I, we just needed an update. We didn't have a lot of paperwork in place for, uh, if you had a report or if you needed to, um, have a paper trail. So, um, this policy comes straight from the OSSBA and then I just made it ours. And then the paperwork behind it comes from the State Department. So, um, it just updates it and then Bryce and I had a discussion this morning that, um, he's kind of been looking through some others, so we may come back to you with another update because there might be something to add, additional to add to it with a prevention program and that kind of thing, so.
Do we have any bullying problems?
You know, I'll let Bryce and, uh, Ms. Richmond kind of address that. What, what do you see in the line of bullying?
I'm always pretty cautious when you get word if there's something's going on. We don't have a lot that is as far as the paperwork process. But, I mean, I mean, there, there's times where stuff goes longer in school and it can easily be handled with conference with the parents and the kids and, you know, and it's, you know, usually kind of very hard at this point.
We have a couple incidents that, you know, once we investigate, talk to all the kids and all the, you know, the teachers around, or the parents, you know, offering the paperwork, since we have a bullying policy, you wanna, but doesn't make it online.
Right.
Write it down.
The camera's gotta help with that.
The camera has enough to watch.
There's always two sides to the story too.
Yeah.
Yes, there are.
So the changes, is that what's been underlined or is this a completely new deal?
This is a completely new policy. It just is, falls in line with what's required, uh, by the, and we're just.
And this is the paperwork here that if you do have to fill out paperwork, this is what's filled out.
Mm-hmm. Incident, incidents, forms, um, so that you can have the proper documentation. And that way you have somebody who's kind of a repeat offender, you have, um, documentation in place that you can see what's, what's been done in the past and what needs to be done for the future. And so I uploaded it to the State Department's website through our accreditation site that we have one.
And then these also get handed out at the beginning of the year, don't they?
Um, I believe that the, the policy is stated in the handbook. It should be. That's where, and, and then.
Everybody gets a handbook, don't they?
Uh.
When they roll?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, we, we send that home. But, uh, the other thing is we, we're placing it on our webpage too. So anytime we start getting some of this type thing, we've, we've got a whole long list of things. theme FERPA, um, bullying, um, oh gosh, lunch program, anything. We're, we've got a list on our website now that you can get to it pretty easily.
Any other discussion on the bullying policy?
I'll make a motion.
Amber's made a motion.
I'll second.
TJ's second.
Willfil?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Keller?
Yes.
Willhite?
Yes.
Number seven, discussion of vote to approve pay app for four and five for Cedar Ridge construction.
Mm-hmm. Um, very little going on, so the pay apps were very small. They did start back today. Um, they're still, their completion date still is the end of March, first of April. Probably one of the things that slowed them down a little bit was me changing the side of the concessions, size of the concession stand. Also, the weather kind of got them in the holidays, so with those things, they, you know, he pulls people off and they go to other jobs and then it's just a matter of scheduling them back, scheduling them back on. So, um, picked out brick this week and, uh, met with the architect, oh, no, last week, last Friday. And, um, everything's going pretty well and, and, uh, probably, um, in the next month, maybe two. We probably need to do some pretty heavy discussion about our, our policy on, um, um, usage and, and then.
On the facility, yeah.
Figure out how we wanna handle that. I met with the fire department, with the, with the volunteer fire department and they had some really good ideas. You know, there's some things that can be done about with, um, uh, a, you know, a code in or that opens it or face recog- uh, recognition. Somebody comes up and they sign in through the school and that way they have their own, um, code or method to get into the facility and lock. And there's a camera and it, it, it shows the time they got in, they came out. And that way, if something happens, you can know who to go to.
Yeah.
Um, one of the things that was, that was stated was that, you know, for the most part, the people of our community are gonna self-police. They're going to make sure that they're not doing anything wrong and they're, and the people around aren't doing anything wrong. The things we'll have to worry about are people bringing their dogs and their skateboards and their, uh, kids with their bikes and things like that because our track just won't accommodate that any longer. So, uh, just lots of things.
How you come to that now, haven't you?
Crawler.
Well, they're, it's locked.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. I thought it was locked.
Yeah, it's all locked up. So some people bring their.
While it's under construction.
Yes. Yeah. And until we're, until we're a hundred percent released from the fire marshal's office, we can't, we can't
open.
Let anybody on, you know, liability wise because we, um, don't have that, just don't have that ability right now. But I, I do believe that, you know, once it's all complete, that our community is going to want to utilize three of those facilities. And we're gonna have to figure out how to balance, um, letting that happen with taking care of our facilities. And I think it can happen. I think that we can, um, you know, put our, our heads together and come up with a good system of our, um, good policies and procedures on how to use it. Um, you know, um, we're, we're coming to our community next week to ask for another bond to be passed and it's an awful lot of support from your community when you've got, and then when you get the facilities that you get, it's, it's really, really neat.
Right, because I think if we say no, then that's just, you know.
Yeah. I don't really think that we wanna do that.
I mean, can our system hold more cameras?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can always build upon that, yeah.
Yeah, we'll build on that and we'll, we'll make sure that we do.
For the whole lighting, that means some low lighting, so don't turn on the giant lights.
Yeah. I, um, you know, one of the things that I, I worry about the most is that if something happens to the football field when there's, um, people on, in the facility, it's not a quick fix. You know, you don't pour dirt on it and then it grows back. It takes a long time to schedule, um, the people that do this to come back and while it's under warranty, we don't, we have to do it that way. We can't void our warranty on our, on our, um, field. So, um, those are all things that we really are going to have to keep in mind and, um, try to, like I said, we're gonna have to balance it. We're gonna have to find a, uh, something that works for all of us. And, because I don't want, I don't wanna tell the community that they can't use our facilities. They, you know, they were gracious enough to vote them in and, um, we wanna make sure that we, we do the right thing too.
Looking forward to that conversation. Um, any other, anything else on the Cedar Ridge construction? Anybody got any questions? The package is right underneath the schedule.
I make a motion to approve the pay app four and five for Cedar Ridge.
Tony's made a motion. I'll second. Jeff's second. Judy?
Willfil?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yeah.
Keller?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Number eight, principals' reports.
We're doing a lot of activities going on right now, so it's a good class coming in. Finish up our last business experience, well, basketball game and start more grades. Some of them are playing on a tournament at Jet. If they stay, they're playing next Monday. We have a funding issue going on in our kindergarten building right now, so we moved one of the kindergarten classes to the fourth.
Again?
Just for temporarily, kind of, on the fourth.
We're gonna have to fix it totally this time, um.
Which side is it? Is it Ms. Radgibber or?
Yeah. It's, it is a, um, we had a clog and the, the snake was able to clean that out. Uh, we had water coming back up. There's a bin in that air conditioning closet that's holding water and it gets pretty disgusting. And, um, so we're, they, uh, we had, um, a plumber come today who's going to take out that bin and close that pipe off and make sure that that gets rerouted. And then, um, how was the smell today? I was, did you? Was it still there? So we ran all weekend. We ran the, uh, heater to, and we cleaned it out really, really well. And you could smell ble- a lot of bleach, but you can still kind of, there's an undercurrent of that, so. We are, uh, working on that and, and, uh, we made the decision Friday to go ahead and move those kids to the available portable building.
Now to move the building sufficient for two or three of them. Funny, isn't it?
Yeah. And that's just a lot of glass, so.
Yeah.
And also this one, good thing it's well.
Field trip.
Well, it doesn't smell, so.
Yeah. Oh my gosh, I just can't, I can't even begin to tell you.
What kind of time do you reckon to re?
Depends on what Chad Teff said today. Um, if there's, you know, different scenarios, if it's just something that he can look at and replumb, maybe they can get back in pretty quick. If it's something that is tear up sidewalk or tear up concrete, I think they'll probably be there the rest of the year and then we'll probably address that in the summer. Try and get that done.
Yeah.
But that's a pretty old building. I don't, what, when was it built? Does anybody know?
Sixty-eight, sixty-four or something like that.
Holy potatoes. That's all, like fifty years old. It's old like me. But, um.
Well, it isn't, but.
But the other side.
It's in the way.
Is just fine. Um, Ms. Patterson's room, can't smell a thing. But we, um, we, uh, replaced that unit on her roof the first of the year. I, that, Thomas from AAC tells me it doesn't have anything to do with the unit. It's just pulling that air off of that nasty stuff and so we're just gonna try to see if we can get it fixed.
So what's going on with us?
Um, district basketball is Friday and Saturday at Ringwood. The boys will play Walcomas and the girls play Ringwood. The games will be on the radio on five point seven. My teachers have, uh, received some professional development training for Google app use from Jessica Shawnbacher through the Curate Tech and that was done free of charge. Uh, she's been here once. A couple weeks ago on Wednesday for school. She'll be here again on the eighth. And I think that we didn't have very many teachers there the first time. A lot of them weren't at all, I think. Teaching them just how to use a lot of the features that we already have available through our email. A lot of things that they can utilize in their classroom. So that's, that's been pretty interesting, pretty useful to me. Uh, Coach Gunner started spring practice this morning softball. He said he expects about twenty high school players and fifteen junior high players this season.
Yep.
Local law enforcement's gonna be hosting an active shooter class here this Saturday. Uh, they're gonna use, um, pretty much all the building, going in and out of classrooms and, and doing that. I think that's open. I know they offered anybody at school that wanted to do that, so if anybody's interested in that, you can contact anybody. Uh, February nineteenth is the local stock show. February twentieth through the twenty-second is the calendar. And then FCCLA, uh, Judy mentioned this earlier, uh, Mrs. Gutch emailed me this information. I wanna pass it along to you guys. Uh, they traveled to Stillwater last Thursday. They took eight members. Seven of those eight members all placed first in their events. Uh, with the eighth member placing second. Uh, those first place winners will advance to state later in March. And those are Bridget Willhite, Amy Golden, Maddy Wheeler, Kimberly Bowe, Jocelyn Flynn, Taylor Miller, and Angel Hernandez. And then we have twelve members compete in an FCCLA personal finance challenge. And all four Cherokee teams finished in the top eight nationally. And they've all qualified to compete in a live challenge in Nashville in July.
Sweet.
Uh, so that's what she was talking about, uh, some traveling expenses and stuff.
Yeah.
Most team members are Beth Lancaster, Lizzie Webster, Jay Hatch, Kelly Franks, Kayla Beinhart, Heather Steele, Kenzie Golden, Morgan Flynn, Taylor Miller, Carla Coleman, and Cody Dooley and Kayla Miller. So, good things that.
Cool.
Very cool. And I think that's about it for right now.
Okay.
Thanks, thanks. Thank you all.
Superintendent's report, number nine.
I just wanted to add that, uh, Kenzie Golden was selected to the State Superintendent's Advisory Committee. And, uh, she is one of ninety-nine kids across the state that are brought in twice a year and, uh, meet with the state superintendent and, uh, get to share their ideas and, and, um, kind of interact with, uh, kids from all over the state. Really proud of her. Um, we are, um, working every day on our bond, on bond, uh, flyers, Valentine cards. Um, the dinner is tomorrow night, uh, where I hope that we'll have a lot of people come so that they can, um, get the facts from our, our bondsman and, um, enjoy a loaded baked potato and, uh, just, uh, come in and kind of hear about it. Um.
What time does that start?
It starts at five. The dinner starts at five, then we'll move to the auditorium at about six and let Stephen L. Smith and, and then I'm supposed to get the bond video tonight and we're going to, um, show the, the new bond video tomorrow. I always say that and I always hear that dun, 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 da, 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 dun. You know, James Bond when I say bond video. So, um.
Squirrel.
Yeah. It's like Bond video, James Bond. But anyway, um, um, got the flyer out for that. Uh, got that taken care of this morning. Uh, on our social media pages, we are doing, uh, bond questions. We get, we get questions from our patrons and so we've been writing, I've been writing them down, kind of keeping up with them. And, um, if you'll, if you'll look on the high school site or the elementary site, we started today with questions like, when is the vote and where do I go to vote? Or what, uh, what can be paid for with bond money? Or, um, you know, just, just your general questions about bonds. So we're going to keep, uh, rotating those on our Facebook page. Our website will have those also where people can go and, and they can get those questions answered. Uh, the vote is next, a week from tomorrow and so we hope everybody will get out and, and vote and, um, we'll do some good things for kids when it passes. Um, we, we did do the lights in the cafeteria and, um, and, um, oh gosh, he came to me and he said, it's, um, I'm just blanked out. Who is it? Um.
Electrician?
Yeah, that did it.
Rex, how did it?
Rex, Rex, Rex. Rex came to me and he said, now you've got two lights on each side that we didn't redo. And he said it'll cost about a five, about five thousand dollars more to go ahead and do those two side lights. So I told him to go ahead and do that so that we would have it all the way through the gym because the, on the ends it was pretty dim. And every place else was like bright and lights and so, um, he did that as a, as a second job, kind of, because we really didn't plan to do that to begin with. But, um, other than that, we, um, like I said, we're, it'll, it'll get really busy, um, on Wednesday uh, when that bond passes and, uh, there'll be a lot of things that start to, okay, we got to, uh, figure out bidding process for all of it. Everything that we're doing is gonna be over the bid amount, so. Things will really get pretty exciting at that time, so, um, appreciate everybody's help and, and we've got the new buildings. The concession and the bathroom are scheduled to be finished the end of March, first of April. And, um, just gonna be excited to finally have bathrooms in the concession stand.
When is the first track meet?
When is the first track meet?
March twenty-one.
March twenty-one. So our, we're hoping to have it by then because we sure don't wanna pull in portables again for just one track meet.
Right.
And then, um, we've, and then once we, once we hit April, wow, it just gets incredibly busy. Prom, track meets, um, FFA's going to, uh, state convention. um, FFA's going to, uh, state convention, FCCLA, speech and debate. Everybody's going somewhere every day. So, um, good stuff. We've got, you know, good, good problems to have. Our kids are very successful and, and I will say too, we have, um, I had a teacher who kind of hit me up and wanted to do, uh, Chromebooks for her room. And we, we did do our language arts, uh, at the high school level with a classroom set of Chromebooks. And so that hopefully will be the beginning for us of, uh, putting them in, in other places. Uh, she is thrilled. They are able to do their Alpha Plus testing in the room. They're able to do, she's using the Google, uh, app for, Google Classroom for all of their folders. There's no more, oh, I left that paper at home. It's in your Google folder. It's really, uh, all coming together with the Google training that the teachers have done. And, and hopefully that'll be the first of many. When this bond passes, we'll get busy, starting with, um, three-year-olds to second grade with some iPads and just do it little at a time. But be very thankful that we can use our money on that. That's about it for me. Do you have any questions?
All right, uh, number eleven, motion to adjourn.
No new business.
Oh. So no new business.
Mm-mm.
And number eleven, motion to adjourn. Amber's motion, Tony second.
Lilfield.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yeah.
Keller.
Yes.
Willhite?
Yes.